I'd like to take a minute before we start our last meeting. We honored Ned Humphries, who passed away. And tonight, I'd like to honor the passing of Gil Katz. Gil was a member of the Margate Planning Board for decades and contributed greatly to its deliberations. We'll miss Gil. And can we please have a moment of silence to honor Gil's service? Thank you. Another longstanding member of the zoning and planning boards is retired, Adio Santori. Adio was a leader on this board, and he cared deeply about the city and its proper development. He will be missed, but we hope he will come and visit from time to time. Adio, bad things happen in threes, so... Finally, we welcome three new members of the planning board: David Carter, Despina Hess, and Remy Pelosi. We hope your services will be useful and rewarding. Roll call. We need to swear in the new members, please. And also, the new members, the microphones in front of you are turned off unless you want to speak. When you want to speak, turn it on, and when you're done, turn it off.
All right, could the three new members please stand? Raise your right hands. State your name.
Aye.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the governments established?
And to the governments established?
In the United States?
In the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear?
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will impartially?
That I will impartially?
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of the planning board member?
All the duties of the office member.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to all three. Thank you.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press, and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two As everyone has seen the minutes of the past meeting, can I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Ball of favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to hear a motion to approve the resolutions and decisions of the last meeting, number 17, 2013, Shawn Gormley; number 18, 2013, Jay and Shannon Snowden; number 19, 2013, Stephen M. Sematitis Jr.; number 20, 2013, Peter Romano; number 21, 2013, Joseph Rochini. Do I hear a motion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the first case is J&amp;D Development Company, LLC, 202 North Jefferson Avenue, Block 429, Lot 62.02, in the MF District, to grant a C variance for front setback and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin? Roger Rubin?
I do. Subject property is a vacant lot with frontage of 62 and 1/2 feet and depth of 50 feet, second from the corner of Jefferson and Monmouth Avenues, where a house is currently under construction, on the corner. The property in question contains 3,125 square feet of land, and per the submitted Peter Weiss Architect plans, a 2 and 1/2-story single-family house is proposed, satisfying all zoning requirements except for front setback for the house wall and porches, first and second floor. This lot is part of a byright minor subdivision approved via the committee established under ordinance 14 of 2012. The proposed house would have five bedrooms and more than adequate four off-street parking spaces, as well as other amenities, including a first-floor den, a second-floor sitting area, and front porches at the first and second floor levels. Variance is required. Front setback for house, the required house wall setback is 14.6 feet, and the proposed is 13.1 feet. And front setback for porches, the required front is 13 feet versus 9 feet 1 and 1/4 inches as design. Comments? This is one of those really odd blocks where the averaging process of homes within 200 feet makes less sense than normally is the case. The Mariner condo complex is 19 feet back, and the house closer to the bay from it is zero feet back. Second, the house under construction is 11.2 feet back, so the subject property will still be backward of it, somewhat protecting its view, combined with the fact of an open porch. Three, the board should consider whether a variance of about 2 feet at this location creates detriments to the neighboring houses. Four, site visitations by the board members are important regarding consideration of view, light, airflow, and privacy. No conditions are recommended at this time.
Before we begin, we missed a resolution and decision from last year, so can I hear a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2013, FCF Associates?
May I?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and one other thing for the record for this case, Margaret Gruppin already has recused herself.
Good evening, Brian Calhoun, head of the law firm, Callahan Thompson Thompson, on behalf of the applicant, J&amp;D Building and Development.
Is this mic on? I don't think your mic's on.
Not that he needs it.
Got it? How's that?
Good.
Good evening, Brian Calhoun, head of the law firm, Callahan Thompson Thompson, on behalf of J&amp;D Building and Development. Mr. Rubin's report's pretty clear. Property's located 202 North Jefferson. We're asking to build a new single-family home. It is a weird block, as you go down, take a look at the averaging. As Mr. Rubin said, Margate Mariners, 19 feet back. The other house is sitting at a 0-foot setback. So we're asking for about a foot and 1/2 to the house wall, and we're asking for a couple feet on the front porch. The house that we're currently building, that Mr. Lindstrom's currently building, is setback, is in front of ours, so it's 11 foot 6 setback with a porch in front of ours also, so that view would not be blocked whatsoever. I have Mr. Weiss here, so let me, Mr. Bergman, we can mark his plan as A1, and let me call Mr. Weiss as an expert and have him walk you really through the project. You're Weiss? Yes, I do. Peter, why don't you just walk them through the project, what we're intending to build, where it's located, and the variance relief that we're asking for?
Mr. Weiss as an expert.
Cameron, do you want me to let him have the microphone?
I can take it out. This building is in a V-zone, which I'm sure you're all familiar with now. So the building is elevated. The ground level will be just parking and storage, so we have 2 and 1/2 levels above that. The bottom two floors are about 1,000 square feet each. The top floor is about 500. It's pretty typical in that it's, the lower level is the living space. On the second floor, we have three bedrooms and a sitting area. Third floor, two bedrooms. On the second, well, first and second floors, we have a deck that stretches across the front of the building. So, as you can see in my analysis here, the setbacks on this block vary considerably in that they go from 0 to 19 feet, so there's no consistency whatsoever to the setbacks on this block. There's only five lots, so you throw out a lot, there's only four others to deal with. We chose these setbacks to just have a little bit more setback or clearance to the street than the property next door, which is under construction right now. So our proposed deck is back 3 feet, and the house is back, was it 3 feet? 4, I'm sorry, 3 feet. And the house is back about 2 and 1/2 feet from the corner building, which is still being built. But my feeling is that since this one building up the block, which is a couple lots down towards the other end of the block, has a 0 setback, that effectively blocks anybody's view from up the street regardless of what we do. So I thought this was a reasonable approach to... Now, I mean, we meet the setbacks on the other three sides, and we're back, you know, I think a fair distance from the street. And of course, we have decks on these two levels, so it's all open in the front of the building.
And the decks upstairs, as you indicated, all open?
Correct.
Any negative impact on the other neighbors on the street? I'll open it up to the board. If this is taken out of the V-zone in the next couple of weeks, will there be any changes to it?
I'm not... And besides, that won't happen anyway.
I didn't hear you.
The next set of maps coming out are working maps. They don't really mean anything. It's sort of a work in progress.
Okay.
My understanding is the next maps that'll mean anything will be out sometime in the fall or winter.
I think they want the parking underneath. That's why they want to go with this construction.
Well, there are advantages, of course, to parking underneath the building, because then you don't have it next to the building, so you have a lot more green space. So that's, that's the plus in this kind of project. And you got additional parking, too.
Any other questions from the board? Does anyone here from the public would like to comment? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Once again, does the board have any questions? Did you hear a motion?
There wasn't any condition, Terry. Right.
Someone second?
Yes.
Let me just say that there's two, for the record, we have to put this on, there's two variance requests. One for front setback for the house and wall, the requirement's 14.6 feet, proposed is 13.1 feet. And the setback for the porch, the requirement is 13 feet, and the proposal is 9 feet 1 and 1/4 inch, so that should be a part of the motion at this point in time for approval for C variances. C variance is for those items.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor. With the nature of the neighborhood that this property is actually being located in, this is going to make a major enhancement. There really is no detriment to the community in this case, to see a nice single-family home going up. And I know J&amp;D developers do a really quality job, so it's nice to see somebody local doing a good project.
Clem was asking?
I don't think granting of either of the two requested variances will have any negative effect on the neighborhood. I vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think the variances really are going to affect the neighbors or the neighborhood in general, so I'm going to vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
For the two variants, for the front yard setback and the setback for the porch, I approve this application.
Can I ask you to go ahead, Paulie?
I approve the application also for the front setback for the house and the front setback for the porch. It does meet the, for the other three sides, it meets code, and I believe there's a minimal effect on the light, air, and space.
Mike Cristaldi?
I also approve the application. I think it's not going to affect anything, any different in that area. I think it'll help.
Craig Palmisano?
I also approve the recommendation here. There's no, it's minimal, very minimal on the setbacks. I approve it.
David Carter?
I go, I approve.
Rich Pal?
You can also cite what people have said before you, that you agree with Mr. Palmisano or whoever. I also approve the application for the aforementioned reasons. Thank you very much.
It passes.
Also, welcome to the new board members. You have a great board, so, and don't be afraid to chip in and join in. Next case is Sensational Desserts LLC. Trading as Johnny's Cafe, 9403 Venner Avenue, Block 228, Lot 80, in the CBD District, to grant a site plan to change a restaurant from non-alcohol serving to alcohol-serving restaurant. Also possible C variances for building coverage, parking, and door-side setbacks. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Yes, I do. Subject property is principally the old Fidelli's Restaurant, which has existed at the present location for decades, and which the applicant has purchased. Intends, per the narrative, to renovate the longstanding Italian-themed restaurant into a "casual seashore-style seafood-themed restaurant, raw bar and bar," unquote. It would, of course, incorporate liquor sales if approved. Also proposed is a small connection between the two buildings, as shown in the Peter Weiss Architect Plan, housing, storage, and allowing for staff to pass between buildings. It is not a customer passageway, and as there are no side setback requirements in this district, there is no variance, there is no variance, there is no setback variance associated with it. There's also no variance for coverage regarding the Fidelli property, as 60% is permitted and with the small addition, and counting the walk-in boxes, coverage would come to 49%. Also proposed is an outdoor seating area per the plans, which appears to be two steps up from the sidewalk. This is on the applicant's property, not the public sidewalk, so there is no ordinance restriction. Above this porch, a deck for the second-floor apartment is proposed with the same dimensions. The applicant states that existing seating is 100, and 92 seats in all are proposed, including restaurant and bar inside, plus outdoor seating. This being the case, there is no parking variance. Actions required are site plan. This is not for the change in the menu, Italian to seafood and raw bar. The site plan relates to the change from a non-alcohol eating establishment to one serving alcohol. The principle of requiring site plan action under this circumstance is of longstanding, with Margate's zoning and planning boards invoked most recently at Miyako Sushi Restaurant and Johnny's originally, when each obtained a liquor license. Number two, C variance for lot coverage for Lot 76, which is the Johnny's Restaurant. Presently, that's at 68%, and increasing by 40 square feet to 68.55% due to the slight portion of the connecting closet being on Lot 76. Comments? As to the site plan question, the principal consideration by board members relates to the change from non-alcohol to a restaurant, bar. The proposed bar restaurant is a permitted use in the CBD District, and outdoor seating is allowed. Intensity of use may be considered, as well as physical site matters, which are minimal in this case. Board members' knowledge of the city and the commercial district is instructive. Two, as stated above, it is set forth that seating is reduced from 100 to 92 seats, and since parking is related to seating, the previous nonconformity of no off-street spaces would be upheld, and there would be no parking variance. The board will be interested in applicant testimony or witnesses to confirm the present seating. There are no city files showing a planning board action with a seating plan. A search of the mercantile files going back to the beginning of the file contains no statement regarding the number of seats. Three, regarding the small coverage variance on Lot 76, this may be considered de minimis or at least quite small, being a half of 1%. The board members may consider whether or not this will be noticeable in terms of building mass or bulk in the location shown 35 feet back from the curb of Venner Avenue. Four, issuance of a liquor license to the Fidelli Building is, of course, a matter before the Board of Commissioners. Planning board approval is totally separate from that process. Five, Jim Gallantino, our construction official and architect Weiss, should advise the board as to handicap issues, if any, with regard to the restaurant and the new open front porch. Finally, with regard to the site plan, the board may consider the proposal as part of the entire commercial CBD District. As to relative benefit or detriment, suitability, land use intensity, and physical and aesthetic upgrade.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Members of the board. My name is Chris Balens, and I represent Sensational Desserts with respect to its application this evening to the planning board. First, I would certainly like to welcome Ms. Hess, Ms. Pelosi, and Mr. Carter to the valuable experience and one that should be, at the very least, interesting. With respect to the application this evening, it is relatively straightforward. The operators of Johnny's Sensational Desserts have entered into an agreement by virtue of one of their entities called Family Bricks Four to purchase the Fidelli's property, which is, which was an operational Italian restaurant, everybody knows where it is, since the early 1980s. The Fidelli's, as we all know, have made a valiant effort to keep that restaurant operational, keep it a viable business, but unfortunately, I think the storm in October was really the last opportunity they had to make a go of it. The building sustained substantial damage, and as a result, Danny Fidelli entered into an agreement with Family Bricks to sell the property to the operators of Johnny's. Johnny Licio is here. He and his wife, Joanne, who nothing but served to be exemplary restaurant operators at that end of town, really have served to bring that, bring that commercial district to what it is now, which is a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly eating and shopping area. It's really been a nice thing for the city. But John and Joanne propose to do with Fidelli's is kind of bring a new concept to the city of Margate. The building will essentially remain unchanged, except for some cosmetic appointments, both to the inside and the outside, but the concept is a restaurant called, which will be very casual, off-the-beach seafood-type eatery and raw bar with a bar that serves alcohol. The liquor license from the Johnny's property can be used at Fidelli's based upon the connection of the buildings. The proposed restaurant and bar are both permitted principal uses in the CBD District. That means the city fathers have found for years now that that location on Venner Avenue is where it wants these types of operations. Operator will be the same, that will be Sensational Desserts. The land will be owned separately by an entity called Family Bricks Four, and it will appear to be a completely different type of operation, though the operators will be the same. What I would like to do is bring up Johnny Licio, who is the chef at Johnny's, will be the chef at Raw. Just to explain a little bit what the concept is, and what the idea is, and what he hopes, what he and his wife hope to bring as an addition to the Margate, what we'll call the restaurant scene, which has really been the way it's been, and we're all very fortunate about that. John, you'll need to be sworn. I just want you to kind of use, after you're sworn.
My name is Johnny Licio. L-I-C-C-I-O.
You and Joanne will, in conjunction, operate that. Would you be kind enough, simply, as I said, just to kind of take what your initial concept was and what you hope to bring to the city?
Take the mic with you, Johnny.
Okay. Well, as you all know, this is old Johnny's, and this is a new addition, which is working out very well, thank you very much, for the last time I was here. Over here is the Fidelli Building. Like he said, we're going to change a little bit of cosmetic, we're going to update the building to a whole new look. Inside, we're just looking for, how do you say, a bar atmosphere with a combination of seafood, off the beach, get a beer, eat some oysters, everything very reasonable for the neighborhood. With Johnny's over here, Raw over here, the bagel shop, all the district, we're getting a big crowd down there. And Johnny's Steak's on the corner. It's a lot of big walk-in traffic, and everybody's very happy with it. As far as this place here, we're not looking at any more seats or doing anything other than what was already there, other than at the bar. You know, you want beer, you want oysters, you want clams, you've got to have liquor. So what I'm proposing is a little bit of outside porch seating, a little bit of clam bake, raw bar, a little bit of cooked seafood, comfortable. Come right off the beach with T-shirts, baseball caps, sneakers, whatever. I think this will be a great addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Opened the restaurant back in 1984. Danny tells me there were, at the very least, 95 seats in that restaurant. There is nothing in the mercantile files or in the city files with respect to the number of seats. Mr. 95, Johnny counted when he went under agreement, there were 100, but we're okay with the 95 number. In fact, only proposed 92, so that does not kick in any... Otherwise, the application is variance-free, but for the one-hand connection between the two buildings here, Johnny's lot. We intend to keep the lot separately, separate, so that variance has to be requested, and to justify that variance.
I do.
John, you're familiar with the property, have you worked on both the Johnny's?
That's correct.
And you are aware, obviously, that there is a 1%?
That's correct.
Would you just kindly walk through that variance briefly with the board?
Certainly. As Mr. Rubin's report points out, with the proposed connection between the, what is currently the Johnny's Restaurant facility and the existing Fidelli's building, there is a proposed connection of a storage area and a walk-in box that allows connection between the two existing structures. The property line at this location... With the proposed expansion of this, or I'm sorry, with the proposed connection area, there's an area of about, a little over three and a half feet by about 15 or a little less than 15 feet. It comes to 40 square feet. Of that area actually falls on the adjacent lot, not on the Fideli property. So, as again, as you may recall, there was a variance granted for coverage on the Johnny's parcel as part of the prior application, and because that 40-square-foot area actually falls on that side of the property line, it then slightly increases the coverage on that lot, requiring a lot coverage variance for that parcel. It is 40 square feet, it calculates out, I believe, at 0.55%, so it's a half a percent increase. From a justification standpoint, there becomes a point where increases in coverage are imperceivable. If you were to walk by this property, you're not going to see, you're not going to know that this property went up by a half a percent. It doesn't create any additional issues with regard to stormwater impacts. The appearance is going to be such that the additional building area is actually happening on the Fidelis side. It is only one-story, it is not a structure that goes multiple levels, so the bulk and the mass of that additional coverage really does not create a negative impact, obviously, on either of these properties, but it does not create a negative impact along your wonderful commercial corridor that's been developed here over the last few years of Venter Avenue. And it does sit approximately 25 feet back from Venter Avenue. You can see an existing alcove that will remain. So, we have a variance condition that is, you know, in my opinion, extremely de minimis in request, and to help mitigate that, if you look at the Fideli property itself, the Fideli property calculation, I believe, for coverage is about 53%. So, the Fideli property is almost 7% below what would be otherwise permitted in coverage. So, if we were able to, if we came in for a subdivision and moved the line over and all of that additional area was on, I'm sorry, I said 53, I think it's 49%, I'm sorry. If we move the property line over and all that expansion area happens to be on the Fideli property, there would not be a variance necessary.
So, the Fideli property in and of itself is more than 10%?
That's correct.
I have nothing for it, Mr. Collins. No other direction?
Sure. And 50 square feet, so you're saying that 40 square feet is on Lot 76 and 100 and?
Only 40 square feet falls on Johnny's lot.
On 80? Or 76? Right.
Is Johnny's Lot 76?
And then 110 square feet is falling on the Fideli property? Is that what you? And did you actually calculate all the walk-in boxes and all the, everything that has ground cover here to come up with that 40? Looking at this plan, it can't be 49% coverage.
Fidelis property, Tom?
Yeah. Hey, you tell me, John, you.
Yeah, well, actually, Peter calculated the coverage, so I'll let Axie speak to that. Question for Mr. Collins, whether or not he calculated the outbuildings?
Did not. And they should be included, the permanent fixtures, same as it was the last time. So, your coverage, can we get a recalculation so we know what the coverage really is?
Mr. Chairman, could I just try to answer Mr. Collins' question? Tom, earlier this week, you asked me to do the calculations on Fideli. You asked this question, yeah, and I did do a calculation, and if this will make you ha, you know, what I came up with, I calculated, the Fidelis lot contains 4,000 square feet. The coverage with the addition and with the walk-in boxes is 2,111 square feet, giving 52.7% coverage for the Fidelis lot with the boxes and with the addition. Is that okay? Does that answer the question?
And that includes the seating outside because it's elevated?
What?
That includes the seating outside because it's elevated?
No, the seating outside does not.
That's lot coverage too.
That's not part of the building.
It's up over?
It's not a roofed part of the building.
No. Porches and decks do not count as part of building coverage.
That's not really a porch.
Anywhere, no.
Not really porch. It's a concrete up, raised up porch.
Patios, patios, porches and decks don't count as coverage.
So, that's not in that?
No. No, it's not. Not, it is not in that.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question for Chris. Well, actually, Pete. Are you relocating the staircase from the one side, from the left side to the right side? Okay. The only question I have is that when you come down the staircase, you run right into a door.
I think you have a problem with reversing the stair anyway.
Okay. Great.
The space that John referred to as an alcove, that's the space between the storage and the sidewalk, how's that going to be treated? Paved, landscaped? Pebble? Grass? Yeah. That can be a pretty unattractive black hole.
You weren't proposing any changes to that alleyway that apparently exists in the building?
Yeah, it goes all the way through now. Well, there's a stair there. You're just going to leave it out.
We're going to leave this way, it's not going to plant grass in there, it's just going to, we just pull it there, we need to order it right out there.
So, what are you talking?
We could put some planters and things in there, some landscaping.
Well, that's what I think you should do.
Does it get any light in there?
There are plenty of things that will grow in there. Any other questions?
We've seen the whole piece of the treatment that Hess does in front of Johnny's, that's not going to stop, that's going to carry it.
Well, threw it back. And the only other question is handicapped access into this new restaurant?
We will make it fully compliant with handicap access as required.
Okay. You'll indicate that on revised plans?
Anyone else on the board? Is anyone here from the public who would like to comment? Please come forward and be sworn in. Talk into the microphone.
Melvin Green. G-R-E-E-N. For North Jefferson Avenue, Margate.
Yes. Connect to the Internet.
I have an objection to the expansion of Johnny's complex that will exacerbate an existing traffic safety problem on Jefferson Avenue. The parking lot behind Johnny's, where they get delivery, can't handle the large delivery trucks, and actually, the lot keeps getting smaller. Therefore, the trucks park on the street on Jefferson Avenue. I have a couple of recent pictures I took, and these are pictures before the season began to show you how the trucks do park on the street there.
For the record, the person is showing his tablet with a photo on it, that's why there's a delay.
Get a microphone. I'll show you.
You have to speak into the microphone over there.
Pardon? Is there a way to print those two photographs that you have?
I could probably get them printed, yes.
Okay, could you do that and submit them to the board secretary for the record?
Yes, okay. Unfortunately, I don't have pictures from last year because I didn't take any, but during the season, there are cars parked on each side of the street. So, that tractor-trailer stops right in the middle of the street, cars can't get through, and by the way, they're there for at least a half hour, the large delivery truck from U.S. Foods. The driveways get blocked, so you can't get your car out. And I've seen cars, like from Dr. Anastasi's office on the corner there of Venter and Jefferson, the cars are forced to go the wrong way on the one-way street if they try to get out. The street goes toward the bay and they therefore, to get out, have to go toward Venter Avenue, which is breaking the traffic laws. So, the result is a safety problem, which, as I mentioned, has become exacerbated over the years as Johnny keeps expanding, and that is my objection.
Is there a loading zone on the side there?
No. Another question, there could be a loading zone on the east side of Jefferson Avenue from Venter to the parking lot behind Johnny's, there's adequate space for a tractor-trailer to park. That would have to be, of course, a traffic consideration, where they'd have to have, I don't know how that goes about getting that approval, but for instance, Castles does have a loading zone during certain hours on the street that runs perpendicular to Venter Avenue, but there is no loading zone here that I know of.
And do you see deliveries on weekends or primarily during the week? Are the deliveries primarily during the week or are they on the weekends?
They are primarily during the week. Of course, as I mentioned, the problem is during the season, there's just no place for a truck to park, so they just leave it right in the middle of the street. And this happens, I've experienced it several times, I don't know, I imagine it happens every week, but I'm not there all the time, but I've run into that problem several times. Last summer, I ran into that problem.
Mr. Green, this board has no jurisdiction for, or not jurisdiction, but power to make loading zones or not, but it seems like a very reasonable request, and I would suggest you take it to the city commission, who has the power to make that a loading zone, and it seems to me a very reasonable and safety-minded request. We can't do that, but we take into account the safety of it, but I would think that you would have some semblance of luck there.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Green, could you come to the next Thursday, Mr. Green, next Thursday at 4:00, there is a work session of the city commission in this room? You could come here then and make that suggestion, I'll be here also and tell them that this board seems to feel that you make, it's a good idea, as Mr. Collins said.
I think that would be a, I think that would be a nice solution, certainly to have a.
Certain hours.
Yeah, certain hours. And I have a question for the owner of Johnny's. Can we monitor delivery times so that if we do have a loading zone and a loading period, that we could have the deliveries during those times?
Absolutely. U.S. Foods comes between 6:00 and 7:00 in the morning. There's one driver that I've been fighting with for two years telling me can't do that. 98% of the time, they park on Venter Avenue in front of the doctors and they walk 2,300 items over with a hand truck. The gentleman's talking, happened at least twice that I know, and I did fight with the driver, you can't do this to my neighbors. And on my mercantile license, it says Venter Avenue, deliveries only. So, they do leave it in the middle of the street, so most of the time they come rolling off, there's somewhere they can park on the side.
So, this delivery zone would be helpful for you?
I would love it. It would help all my trucks, you know what I mean? It would be great.
And we want you to be, you know, we want you to be successful in getting all these deliveries.
I do appreciate that, but I do want to see what he's saying because I seen it, there's one driver, U.S. Foods, and I can't argue with everybody, but for the majority, they park on Venter Avenue and they walk. And I seen this guy, there's an older guy too, and he walks 2,300 items, takes him two hours to deliver because, you know, there's nowhere for him to park on a side street. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Board have any further comments?
I have another question, Mr. Ballen. Mr. Ballen, you're joining? I'm sorry. You're joining these two properties, 150 square feet in the center, which actually makes them an impertinence to each other, so they're becoming a common property, but you're trying to keep the land separate. Long-term history of Margate and this board has always been to combine lots. We made Downbeat Fideli do it, I had to do it, Maloney's had to do it. I don't understand why you would not, why would we want to have one business entity and you're actually asking us to approve a building across property lines, which this board doesn't normally do?
Mr. Collins, I.
We are building, I'm not, let me finish then.
Finish.
So, we're actually saying, okay, we're going to give a variance and let him build across the property line, whether he owns it or not, you really.
With no setbacks, how can it be across a property line?
If they don't join each other, he can't carry his liquor license. They have to be.
Well, they're each on the property line.
To each other.
Yes.
It's not going to stop in the middle. It's going, building the building across the property line. Has to. I don't understand why you would not want to join this like we've always done and make this one nice neat package. You're asking me to vote for building across a property line, basically, and give an variance and do it.
I'm asking for a coverage variance, I'm asking, there's no requirement that I can't build across. Tom, I understand in your situation, you have one entity, one land. Lots. I have two separate landowners, two separate financing packages, two separate banks involved, two separate lots which both conform. There's no regulation that says I can't build across a property line in case it happens all the time. For instance, the Jacoby O'LL condominium complex across from the gas station, that's two separate lots. What this board has approved, any number of residential townhouse projects with one building across a multitude of lots. Look at Mark Gallagher's townhouse project, there's probably 30 lots back there, that's for all intents and purposes. We are building -- let me finish then. So we're actually saying, okay, we're going to give a variance and let him build across the property line, whether he owns it or not, really.
With no setbacks, how can it be across a property line?
If they don't join each other, he can't carry his liquor license. They have to be --
Well, they're each on the property line.
To each other. It's going to be -- it's not going to stop in the middle. It's going building the building across the property line. Has to. I don't understand why you would not want to join this like we've always done and make this one nice, neat package. You're asking me to vote for building across a property line, basically, and give an variance and do it.
I'm asking for a coverage variance. I'm asking, there's no requirement that I can't build across -- Tom, I understand in your situation, you have one entity, one land. Lots. I have two separate landowners, two separate financing packages, two separate banks involved, two separate lots which both conform. There's no regulation that says I can't build across a property line in case it happens all the time. For instance, the Jacoby O'LL condominium complex across from the gas station, that's two separate lots. What this board has approved, any number of residential townhouse projects with one building across a multitude of lots. Look at Mark Gallagher's townhouse project. There's probably 30 lots back there. That's for all intents and purposes, that's one lot, because they're all separate owners. I have separate owners. I have Family Bricks Two owns Johnny's, Family Bricks Four is going to own Fidelis. Both lots are conforming, so there's no merger that comes into play. They're not merged as a matter of law. If you look at any -- there's not one casino and property built in Atlantic City that's not on at least five separate tax map lots, one building, because they're all separate owners. There's no requirement. I understand we've always done it that way. I'm suggesting in this instance, it does not have to be -- there's no requirement that be done that way. If you can find something else for me that says I have to do it, I'll do it, but there's nothing that says I have to. And for purposes of land use planning and real estate holdings, our client prefers to hold this lot as a separate entity and a separate lot.
Chris, who's the owner of -- who are the members of Family Bricks Two?
Joanne Licio is the owner, is the sole member of both Family Bricks Two and Family Bricks Four.
So Ms. Licio is the sole owner of both?
Sole member.
I'm sorry, sole member of Family Bricks Two, that's Lot 76.
Johnny's.
And Family Bricks Four, which is the proposed lot.
Which is contract purchaser of Fidelis, that's correct. And also the sole member of Sensational Desserts, the applicant here in the operating entity.
And if you know the answer to this, are there going to be shared services between the two restaurants?
Not be shared services between the restaurant, be separate staff.
Okay. So separate staff?
Yes.
Why the connection then?
For purposes of utilization of liquor license. Liquor license can be used from Johnny's if the buildings are connected.
But that's shared services then? If you're sharing one liquor license --
Shared liquor license.
Still shared services. Services are --
And what does that have to do with lot consolidation?
It just doesn't fly. I don't.
Doesn't seem right, because you've always done it one way.
Well, you're looking to do one thing for a land purpose, and then you're turning around and say, but we're going to do another thing for a liquor license. It's like, it just doesn't -- something's wrong in the chicken coop.
So what I'm hearing is you're not going to voluntarily merge?
I'm not going to voluntarily. If the tax assessor feels differently and finds something that requires us to do so, I'm more than willing to hear. I have found nothing that requires us to do it.
I just don't want to -- I want to admit on the finding of this board.
I don't think it's under this board's purview to do that.
If the board does approve, whatever the board's going to do, that's not going to stop the municipality if they wish, based on the legal requirements, that they could merge a lot. And so therefore, if they try to sell it off next time, the municipality could say, well, we think it's merged, now you're going to need a subdivision to sell it off.
Either the municipality assessor will merge it or not.
Right.
So of course, if they then want to sell Fidelis or Raw, we'd have to come back and have it subdivided off.
I mean, I understand what you're doing.
If they did.
That the municipality's not waiving that argument, obviously. So we don't want to be stopped from making that by this planning board action.
Except for Commissioner Talby, the municipality's not here. And the municipality, the tax assessor can do whatever tax assessor needs to do.
No, but there's case law to say if the planning board approves it, that could be utilized as a stop potential for the municipality to do that. And I'm just putting on the record that that's not happening.
In deference to this board, I would waive any argument of a stop with respect to the assessor coming in at the end and somehow finding that the lots must be consolidated.
And I have one more question. The coverage issue, this is for Roger. The 68.55 percent, is that with the additional?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there are also economic reasons, tax reasons, and liability reasons to have separate properties with separate ownership too that they didn't mention, but do we have the power to make them consolidate?
I know that it's a practice that's used in a lot of municipalities, and in most instances, it's because it's residential areas that they're building right across. In this instance, there's a zero lot line essentially requirement, so there's no setbacks. So my opinion is that we can't require them to consolidate legally, but that doesn't mean that there can't be a legal merger against the property sometime in the future.
By not by this board?
But not by this board.
Well, then that's end of discussion.
Would that be a conditional issue that we can impose on this case?
I don't think you can impose a consolidation as a condition legally.
Okay.
Anything else? Stan, would you read the motion?
Yes. The applicants requested site plan approval for the -- the applicant's contract purchaser of Lot 80, I believe, from the application. They're requesting minor site plan approval to essentially run a restaurant, which is a commercial business and is permitted use in the CBD zone. They're also requesting a C variance for lot coverage for Lot 76. The requirement is 60 percent. The current structures are 68 percent, and the proposed structures with the connection is 68.55 percent. And that would be a C variance for that. So it would be a motion and the affirmative for minor site plan approval, the C variance for lot coverage.
And two --
And a condition that the planners are in front of the alley.
And revised plans showing full handicap access to the new restaurant.
Okay.
He said that.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we improve with the conditions set forth by our solicitor, including planners and handicap accessibility. And I take into account Mr. Green's concerns with parking, and I hope that the commission will explore a loading zone in time, and that the owner will encourage that the deliveries are scheduled during those times.
I vote against the application as it's presented. I feel that the information I've been given has been inadequate. I've been infidelities 100 times. I don't believe there was 100 seats in there. The coverage was off again as it was in the past. It always seems to be growing as we get to the meeting and not what's here. And the connection of the buildings and the lines, it's just too confusing for me, so I vote against it.
Clem Wazlasky?
I think the upgrades and the type of operation here are going a length considerably to the energy of the neighborhood that's been kind of a dead spot for a long time. I vote yes.
Michael Richmond?
I think that the --
Mike?
Oh. Thanks, Mike.
I think the C variance is really de minimis. I think it's going to be a good addition to the neighborhood. I'm going to vote yes.
To the two variances that they have requested for the site plan approval and the C variance for coverage, that's a tough street. I was going down Jefferson Avenue today, and I stuck behind a recycled truck for 15 minutes, and he was trying to service the people that were just on the street in the residential area. So that is a very highly congested street. I can't say that the trucks will be stopping deliveries on that street. We'll take any less congestion on that street. Other than that, the issue with the staircase on the side, the staircase was -- I'm glad they're removing it and putting it on the other side, because the staircase was very unstable in the condition it was in. As to Mr. Collins's argument, I'm relying on Stan Bergman's, the solicitor, for his interpretation on what the law is, and I hope that that's correct about the nonconsolidation of the properties. And I vote yes.
I think the C variance for lot coverage is de minimis. I think it's 0.45 percent. And it's nice to see our restaurants flourish and expanding, and I vote yes.
Margaret Hoover-Malti?
I think that the upgrade and the aesthetics of the plan far outweigh the minor site division and the C variance, and I vote yes.
Mike Chris-Ballamy?
I think the upgrade of the building outweighs the variances, so I vote yes. I think it'd be good for the neighborhood.
Greg Palasano?
I agree with Mike and the others. It'd be a nice improvement for the area, the business district, and I vote yes.
Richard Patterson?
I also vote yes. I do see a detriment in Mr. Green's concern about the traffic, and I would hope that the City Commission can give that street some relief. I just, I understand what Mr. Collins is saying, but I also don't see any public good that would come from taking two lots with two separate buildings, consolidating that lot. So I vote yes.
It passes eight yes, one no. Thank you very much.
Next case?
Chris?
Next case is Cousins LLC, 125 North Washington Avenue, Block 326, Lot 31, in the C1 District, to grant a site plan, D variance and C variance. Taxes are current.
Rich, we got to leave.
Pardon?
D variance. We have to go.
Oh, okay. The persons themselves will be Commissioner Talby, Mr. Gallantino, and Mr. Collins.
What is the D variance?
Let me start again. Cousins LLC, 125 North Washington Avenue, Block 326, Lot 31, in the C1 District, to grant a site plan, D variance and C variance. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. Subject property is an existing four-unit residential building or quadruplex on a lot of 71 by 105, totaling 7,561 square feet. It is a building of antiquated design, not very well maintained over the years, which suffered damage from Hurricane Sandy. The new owners purchased the property with the intention of making a total renovation and creating a condo association, but the extensive sandy damage and the technical inability to elevate the existing structure have made total replacement after demolition the only option to retain a four-unit building. Consequently, the application is presented herein for a new flood-elevated structure per the architectural plan submitted by Christina Buendicio, architect, and the engineering site plans of Arthur W. Ponzio. There are three two-bedroom units and eight. There are three two-bedroom units and a two-bedroom plus walk-through den proposed, as compared to the building being demolished, which had four two-bedroom units. Parking is sufficient and no variance is required. The second-floor unit arrangement is smaller than the first floor, allowing for comfortable second-floor decks on the roof of part of the first floor in the rear of the building. Both floors have front porches or decks presumably with some bay and possibly ocean views. The proposed quadruplex replacement is of a similar scale and mass as the one being demolished, having a floor-area ratio of 0.53 versus 1.0 as permitted, or just a bit more than half of the livable building area that any building in this zone is entitled to. It appears to be in scale with the three triplex buildings on this block, at a higher first-floor elevation, of course, due to sandy, even though it has four units. Note that the parking is accessed via an easement across the corner property from Monmouth Avenue. The actions require our site plan. All developments of three units or more are evaluated by the board in terms of car and pedestrian circulation, general layout, landscape plan, and orientation to the street and surrounding residential and other properties. Number two, D variance. This is a variance for density. Per zoning, 2,200 square feet of land is required per unit. This property contains only 7,561 square feet, which divided by 2,200 yields 3.43 units, which rounds to three. So the density presented of four is one more than what is allowed. And then there are some C variances. Size of the lot. This is the converse to the D variance. Four units require 8,800 square feet, and this parcel contains only 7,561 square feet. I thought Gil Katz was still here. Front setback for the building. 16.75 feet is required via the 200-foot survey versus 14 feet as proposed. Front setback for the porch, 12.43 is required versus 6.2 feet as designed. Side setback on the left, 10 feet is required versus 3 feet to the side of the front porch. It is 12.7 feet to the left side of the building wall. Side setback on the right, 10 feet is required versus 7 feet to the rear one-story portion and rear second-floor deck, side first-floor deck, and 8.2 feet to the side of the front decks. Front landscape area, 35 percent required. It is 22 percent as proposed. Distance between buildings, 10 feet required. It is 9.9 feet to the house on the ocean side. Comments? Number one, as to the site plan, board members should ascertain if car and pedestrian circulation are safe, landscaping appears adequate, and the sighting of the building is sensible. There will also be a site plan review by the city engineer, which is attached, and his suggested conditions and changes should be made a condition if approved. Two, regarding the density variance and the converse, C variance for lot area, consider that this is four units at proper flood elevation under modern construction, replacing four badly damaged antiquated units below flood elevation. And all of this at the same floor area ratio of half the permitted 1.0. In essence, the building is half the permitted building mass, even if it was a triplex. Three, note that building height is 28 feet above flood elevation as compared to a permitted 30 feet. Four, the distance to the right neighbor's house, variance of 0.1 feet is de minimis, which is 1.2 inch variance. Five, the left setback of the main house is improved from the existing and legal, leaving only the porch variance to be considered. Site visits should note the trade-off benefit to that side neighbor. Six, the right setback situation is different. It goes from existing, the tear-down structure of more than conforming, to variances as stated above. Your observations will be made in terms of whether this creates detrimental impacts to the affected right neighbor. Note that it is a little over 17 feet to the main mass of the proposed structure from the right property line. Seven, we have here a case of a four-unit damaged property being replaced in kind and at flood elevation and modernized. We have what may be considered a hardship variance in that but for the type and quality of construction, Margate ordinances would permit raising the existing structure to flood elevation. Consider whether or not the city and the neighborhood might be better off with this proposal. Finally, proposed conditions will include, should include satisfaction of non-wavable engineer requirements, submittal of an easement document for the board's files with regard to that parking access, and any other conditions by the board. And I refer to the attached letter, which the applicant has a copy of from the city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Members of the board, my name is Chris Ballen, and I represent Cousins LLC and its principal, Lee Berman, who is here with us this evening. After the property recently purchased at 125 North Washington Avenue, it's identified on your tax map as Lot 31 and Block 326. Property is located in the C1 zoning district where the multifamily use is a permitted -- if any good comes out of this storm, this is the kind of project that I think is a good project resulting from an unfortunate situation in this particular building. All of us know this particular building as an older antiquated concrete building with a flat roof, housing four two-bedroom residential units. What Mr. Berman will tell you is he went under agreement to purchase the building, renovate it, conduit and sell off the units prior to the storm in October. Closing was scheduled for shortly after the storm. He did not have an out, so to speak, did not tend to get out. The storm occurred, the intention at that time, and he'll tell you more specifically, was to renovate the building, but in order to undertake the renovations, we all know the substantial improvements required of the building required him to raise it. He had looked at to be raised. It's a concrete building, on concrete, and essentially really can't be raised. So the proposal this evening is to tear it down and to rebuild a brand-new four-unit building with the footprint slightly modified to better accommodate this particular site and to bring it up to all modern-day standards, including the new V-zone first-floor elevation standard. There are variances associated with the application. Because the existing building is non-conforming in several respects, we simply propose to continue those non-conformities, not to exacerbate any of them, but for one right side yard setback. With that, and I've have captive attention to everybody, let me have Lee Berman sworn, and John and Christina, you guys can be sworn. Berman sworn, and John and Christina, you guys can be sworn. Purchased this building shortly after, within months after Storm Sandy?
In early October, we had the building under agreement. There were current tenants in it, and we agreed to purchase the building two weeks after the current tenants moved out. They were originally moving out in December, and we would take it, we would settle at middle of December. Unfortunately, the storm came and washed away their unit where they lived. They moved out early, and we took the building over two weeks after. Despite the damage, because of the agreement that we had, there was really no way to get out of it. And in the, we were going through to renovate the building. We hired Christina Buendicio to do a basic renovation as we're going through, made the most sense through the damage to the building that we would raise the building. The building is all concrete and CMU, so raising the building unfortunately was not an option. And that's where we came up with the, the best plan to demo the building and build it to the same specifications and footprint, just to the modern-day standards.
So obviously, the...
Yes.
And obviously, financially, you're now kind of not where you intended it. You've already been sworn. You are a licensed professional architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Jack, as you started with Lee, and as a result of the storm, what occurred?
For the storm, we were taking dimension as built to renovate the existing building. Days after that, I was surprised to receive a call from the client saying, "We continue, you know, continue working." Positive answer, so we continue working on the same footprint. We didn't want to enlarge it, just keep continuing with the same footprint. You know, use some criteria. And this is what we are today, two-story building over park, over storage. We increased the stairs on both sides just to comply with code, but dimension, the footprint, the dimension of the decks, the building itself is the same as it is now. We have, and I want to clarify that based on the, what Roger Rubin said, there are two units, two-bedroom. One unit is three-bedroom, and the fourth unit is two-bedroom with a walk-in den.
Mr. Rubin, like Christina said, is there...
Good, all right, thank you. But the ground floor is storage. The orders will come through this stair or the others, the right or left stair to the unit. Each floor has two units, so we have four units in total. The parking will be at the rear here, so they can go to each one of the stairs. And they do have very nice views to the bay. It's all stack of building, asphalt roofing shingles, and fiberglass decks with railing and the columns. All this is piling because we are in a V-zone, so the piling will be here and they will be covered with, with an enclosure, column enclosure, to make it more attractive.
Christina, the existing building is, is a flat roof, both its... For instance, where I'm pointing to on this exhibit, in these areas, these are all flat roofs, correct?
That is correct, and also because we had to comply with the size of the stair, we have to move... Yes.
And with the existing footprint, you couldn't get that stairwell... state of New Jersey?
That's correct.
And your office submitted the site plan that's here for the board to consider?
That is also...
Obviously testified before this board previously.
Yes.
If you would, without me going into detailed questions, would you simply take the board through the zoning, the existing conditions at the property?
As Chris already mentioned, the property is known as Block 326, Lot Number 31. It is just, it's one, it's right on Washington Avenue, just one property off of Monmouth Avenue. It is a, a site that has a slightly odd frontage of 71.667 feet and a lot depth of 105.5 feet and an area just over 7,200 square feet. The property itself currently, as, as you heard, is developed as a four-unit building. It's a quite old, quite antiquated, outdated, and as you heard from the storm, in very poor shape, a building that is really in need of redevelopment. The building itself has a number of existing non-conformities that exist, and I'm just going to walk you around the building to explain to you the existing non-conformities on the property today. The current, the current building footprint that you see, this is the survey plan that was submitted with the packet, with the, with the site plan package. The current, the gray shaded area that you see on the plan here is the existing building, main building footprint. That building currently sits 14 feet from the front yard, front property line, where 16.75 feet is required. The, the existing front porches are also a non-conformity where a little over 12 feet is required, and that porch is at six, a little over six feet. You can see the side yard setback to the structure of the main, of the principal structure at seven feet, and the decks and stairs at three feet, again, also non-conforming, non-conformities on the property. So as you heard Mr. Berman explain, he went, kind of went down a path that, that he could not return from with, with regard to the development of this project. And what, what we, what he arrived at is, we think, a very nice project for the site, a beautiful building, as you saw from the rendering. And there's, although there are a list of deviations that are requested this evening, we think that, that really the benefits of those deviations really outweigh the detriments. And I'll hopefully be able to explain that to you, why, why I think I'm able to say So this is the site plan that was submitted with the application, but obviously it's been colored and blown up, so you can see a little more clearly from your seats. The, the project, and I'll quick, I'll just kind of hold, actually, I'll put this down below so you can see. The project is basically to redevelop the same building that he has on the site, just with some slight modifications, we think, to make the project better, and also to comply more, or to comply with the current FEMA requirements for this area. This property in Washington Avenue is, I'll say, one of the more difficult development areas right now in the community because a large portion of Washington Avenue is, now falls into V-zone. So there's a lot of, lot of hurdles to deal with in V-zones, as, as you've heard on a number of applications, this being one of them. So when the, when the, when the proposal was to move forward with the, with the, with the building as it sits, the modifications that were, that were determined were to, obviously you heard Ms. Buendicio modify the two stairs in the front. Obviously, the building is coming up to meet flood zone requirements with storage beneath. But the balance of the site really lays out nearly, as you can see, just if, just pictorially between the two plans, nearly identical. The way the site is, the way the site will be built is that the structure will have two levels of decks along the front of the building. The main building mass obviously centered on the site now, where it currently is, I'll say, slid toward Monmouth Avenue and, and holding a relatively tight side yard setback to the adjacent multifamily structure. A lower, what I'm calling a wing area, which you can see, again, very, very similar, almost identical in shape and size to the existing condition. And then an existing parking field in the rear of the property that will remain and be redeveloped, as you can see in this configuration. The deviations that are necessary with this application, and I'm, again, I'll walk you right around the building, comparing those, comparing what is, what, what is there today, what is now proposed, and what the variance is necessary for each of those elements. And I will, I'll start with the front yard setback. The proposal is to match identically in setback with regard to the front porches and also the front building wall. So the front porch, the front decks are proposed to be at six feet from the front property line, and the front building wall is proposed to be at 14 feet from the front property line. That matches the current day footprint, but that is a deviation from your current land use ordinance because the average setback at this location averages for the main building wall to be 16.75 feet, and the average setback for the porch is, is required to be 12.43 feet. So that's the deviation in the front yard.
We are meeting what is there now, not, not going any further.
We're not going any further into the front yard with the building, main principal building, and we are not going any further into the front yard with the decks, the decks themselves. Taking you right around the building, the side yard, the, the decision was made to slide the building away from the Monmouth Avenue, away from Monmouth Avenue, or toward the south, we'll say, in order to create additional openness from the adjacent multifamily structure. As I indicated when I started, from the survey, you can see, the existing building is seven feet, the existing building mass is seven feet from that side property line, which is a non-conforming condition because the requirement at this location is 10 feet. The existing stair on that side is three feet from the side property line. So what is proposed is a modification to open that side area up, create some additional relief from that adjacent building, and as you can see, center the main building mass on the property. What that creates is, that creates a conforming condition as, with regard to side yard for the building itself, and it holds the existing condition of three feet for the stairs and front decks. So from that adjacent building, the stairs and decks are still within, are still at that three-foot setback line, the dimension that, that that building is accustomed to, but they are now achieving another 5.7 feet of openness in that side yard between the two buildings. So you are now going to have a building which is, which, which has, which is eight feet from the stairs to the adjacent building, and a, let's see, 12, 9, 7, oh, about 17 feet between buildings as, as now proposed. So it's a, I'm sorry.
The only variance on that side really is three feet to the deck and stairs.
That is...
Not necessarily the stairs, just the deck.
The stairs are actually permitted in the side yard, but that, because the deck comes across the front, therein lies the variance. That's correct. So that, that creates a nice openness on that side. Taking you around to the rear of the property, the property is actually conforming currently in the rear, and it is proposed to conform with regard to rear yard setback as now, as now proposed to be constructed. Going toward what I call the right side as you're looking from Washington Avenue, that is the area where there actually is a reduction in setback. The reason for the request of the reduction in side yard setback, again, as I mentioned, is to position the building more toward the center of the site. And what it creates is, is a side yard setback of seven feet from that, that, that wing area that I was explaining to you earlier in the discussion, a side yard setback of 8.2 feet from the stairs and deck at the front of the structure. But I think important to note is the mass of this structure is, is very low as compared to the size of this lot and what's permitted. So if you look, I just did some quick percentages, this is, this is only about 18 feet of depth where, where we're at seven feet for that building mass. 18 feet of depth over a side yard that's 105 feet long, it's, the percentages are very low as, with regard to where we actually deviate. We have a 37-foot rear yard with no building whatsoever, so there's plenty of openness in the rear of the property. There is conformity of, of the building in the center, and then obviously conformity, again, once you get beyond the front deck. So there's a breakup of mass, there's a breakup of heights, and there's a breakup of depths, which, which in a conforming condition, as a 10-foot wall along that property line, it would be much more impactful to that neighbor than the proposed design as it is currently perceived.
In fact, the principal two-story building enjoys a setback from the property...
That's correct. It's actually, from that property line to that main building wall, actually, I, I measured it today, is 17.8 feet, so it's almost 18 feet.
Now, that's with respect to the setbacks, John. There is also... Much fun, Alan.
Sure. Obviously, this board's aware of the requirements of a D variance. We have to establish the positive and the negative criteria in order to justify a D variance. In this specific application, I believe the positive criteria are justified because there are a number of special reasons that exist with an application like this. First and foremost, and this one really goes to the heart of this application really, and that is, security from flood, fire, and other natural and man-made disasters. This is an application where a, a person set out to buy a piece of property, to renovate that property, to make it beautiful, and he got caught in a situation that he had no control over. He continued to set out to still renovate that building in accordance with all the applicable codes and wasn't able to do so within the footprint that he had. He was at a point of getting ready to pull building permits and found out that he couldn't elevate the structure because of the, because of the existing structural condition of the building. So what we have is a building that we are, is going to completely comply with all plumbing, HVAC, all building codes of, of any kind, completely comply with FEMA requirements, completely comply with the new advisory-based flood elevation maps. And for those reasons, we believe that purpose of zoning is clearly advanced with this application. And I, I think there actually are two more purposes that, that can be established with this application, and that is obviously the creation of a desirable visual environment through creative design techniques. The building that we have existing, I think you saw photos of it, it is a building that doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood in any fashion. Some of the older buildings that are on this block even have been rehabilitated and brought up to a more modern-day standard. This building is, is a building that is really in need of that, and this project will absolutely be an aesthetic enhancement while not increasing any density on the property from what has existed for many years. So for those reasons, we believe that purpose of, of the ordinance is advanced. And finally, I think we believe that the promotion of general welfare is advanced here because we're, we're getting rid of a structure that's non-compliant. I mean, that's, that's critical. That we, the goal of, of all of these island communities is to, is to get rid of as many of these non-compliant structures and bring them into compliance. It's to the benefit of the neighbors, it's to the benefit of the property owner, it's to the benefit of the community. So we think removing this non-compliant structure clearly helps to promote the general welfare.
Do you then, John, think that the variance that we're asking for can be granted?
You know, the, the variance here for, the D variance here is with regard to density. The density variance here is because if you calculate our lot area, we are technically only permitted 3.5 units on this lot. We had, this property has had four units for a great number of years. The proposal is to maintain the density that's on the property. So we are, we're not proposing to increase density. This site has, has accommodated that density for many years. The parking on this site accommodates that four units of density. The proposal here is, is not to intensify the use that has been there.
What's important, John, I think, is Mr. Rubin pointed out that the FAR control...
Correct.
It continues to...
And I was actually going to have that discussion with the justification of the C-variances. But what Chris is saying is that when you, you know, variances are always a balancing act. When you look at this project, we are asking for, when you list them, it looks like we're asking for a lot of little variances. But when you look at this project as a whole, this building, as proposed, is .53 in FAR. This building, if we were to hold a 10-foot side yard and comply, and hold another 10-foot side yard and comply, and hold a 16.75-foot front yard and comply, and do away with all those little variances, could go to an FAR that creates twice the building mass on the lot. So, this is truly a balancing scenario where, yes, we need a variance here in the front, we need a variance on the side, we need a, we need a density variance because it's an existing non-conforming condition. But when you look at, at the project in total and you look at the scope and scale of what, of what this, of what our client is proposing to provide on this property, it's dramatically below what the byright condition is, could be, even if this was a one- or two-unit building or a three-unit building, which all would comply with regard to density. So, the benefit of keeping the FAR down at .53, keeping the building coverage in the range of, I believe it's about, it's a little over 30 percent. You can see the greenery and the landscaping around the site, parking in the back, which allows, which is, which is a really nice element to a multifamily building like this because what it allows for, as you can see from the renderings, it allows for a really nice curb appeal. You don't have to have three, four, five driveways coming into the front of that building where you normally see in multifamily buildings. It really, really creates a scenario that we believe the benefits of, of all the deviations that we've asked for outweigh the detriments.
In terms of massing, obviously, the building is two feet lower than it could be.
The building is proposed at 28 feet above floor, which is permitted to be at 30 feet. And there are two other minor deviations I think we need to mention. Mr. Rubin's report points out, there's a requirement of 10 feet between buildings, the building to the southerly side of us, we are at 9.9 feet against, again, depending on who measures it, it may end up coming out to 10 feet during construction, it's that close. But that is technically a variance. And the other interesting item is that in the C1 zone, we're required to have front yard landscaping of 35 percent. We're actually at 22 percent because we're, it's basically being, it gets measured to the, to the front deck area. But if you look at the, if you look at the proposed front setback, I'm sorry, the proposed rendering, you can see, we don't have to, we have no driveways in the front, we only have two walkways. Mr. Berman is proposing to create a nice lawn area with landscaping below those decks because of the fact that this building does have to be elevated because it's in the V-zone. So, you are actually going to have a green space that is going to be about 14 feet in depth from the property line, and that's not counting the green space on either side of the sidewalk. So, the perceived landscaping in front of this building is actually going to be much greater than what the ordinance even requires, although technically, it is a variance.
And then, do you think in light of where this building is and what's there now?
Yes, the site is clearly particularly well-suited because the use is there, it is four units, has been four units, and all of the issues associated with negative impacts of too much density, in our opinion, are accommodated here. In a site like this, one of the critical elements is parking. This site is fortunate enough to have an easement, and just so everybody understands the parking, it has an easement to come from here across the, across the adjacent property with this, the site I'm circling right now being our property, comes, utilizes the adjacent neighbor's property to access its rear yard by way of a recorded easement, which is something that's a real benefit to this property, and it actually helps to allow for a very, very nice design.
Thanks, John. That's all I have.
Any questions from the board? Mike?
Yeah, I have one question. It'd still be good with it, but if you'd scale this roof out, it calls for a six-pitch roof on it?
Five.
It's like, it's calling for a six here. It's actually coming out of four, which brings you two, two feet higher at the peak. I don't know if it's a typo or...
Can you say your voice is a typo?
Pardon?
Again.
If, when I scale this off, your roof, you have a 612 on this roof and a 512 on the front porch area. If I scale it out, it comes out to a four pitch. And if I bring it back to a six, because our ordinance is five, 512, that'll put you two feet higher at the peak, which still, you're still good. So, I don't know if that's a typo.
I have, I will have to check that, but the minimum will be...
Okay. I mean, even if it is, you're still good. You're still under.
Yeah, we will be below that.
Okay, just so they think of Newton.
What you call space number eight here, if you come up and stay in that 10-foot easement, you can't get into that space number eight.
Which one is, I don't, the plan I brought isn't numbered, which one's eight?
Top left.
This one?
That one.
Okay. You're saying...
Without going into the rear of the adjacent property, you can't swing into that parking spot. I tried it.
You're saying if you stay in the 10-foot easement. I mean, frankly, the property has been used for many years, and the cars that come through there have been utilizing this entire driveway, you're correct. And one of the things we've, one of the things we've actually talked to the client about, we haven't shown it on a plan yet, and it does not affect anything with regard to an approval, is we've talked to the client about, about creating a space here so that vehicles can, vehicles can have another maneuver, maneuver location, meaning if a vehicle is parked here, it can back up, back into that and create a turn here, and then, again, vice versa, a vehicle could come, if he had to, if somebody drew a hard line and put a fence up, for example, and made you stay in the easement, he could come here, make a turn, utilize that, and perhaps back into that space. Is it the most ideal space on the site? Absolutely not. But if the space is needed to be used, a vehicle, it'll be multiple, it'll be multiple turns, but a vehicle will get in there.
Doesn't, in that zone, there's, in that zone, there's no requirement, it's just like landscaping. So, if we're to do that picture in the area, it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't give you any variance, it would just be less grass in the site.
Do you have more parking than you're required to have?
No, it's two units, two spaces, three units, four units, the number of bedrooms kicks in eight spaces.
I question whether you have it.
Sir, anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Please come forward, be sworn in.
May I have your full name, please?
Joanne, J-O-A-N-N, Costa, C-O-S-T-A, 121 North... C-C-O-S-T-A.
I'll be great. Be sure. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I do. I just, I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand. You're saying I'm to the right of the property. How far over are you coming? Are you ending at their party, at the party line, or is there more space between the stairs?
Are you here?
How far over that is to my side? Like, I mean, how much space is left? Is it going to be all the way over? No, I understand that. I just didn't know how, like, right now, it is open, there's much more space on the right side, like you said. I just didn't know how close over you were coming to the side of mine, not that I... Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who wants to speak? Public portion is closed. Does the board have any questions or further comment?
I'd like Roger's opinion on my parking concern.
I agree with it, since they're willing... I'm not, I don't, since they're willing to put a, I want to ask John a question. You talked about an extra parking space. Why does it have to be a parking space? Why can't it just be a...
That's what he said. He didn't say parking space.
I didn't mean that.
Okay. Yeah.
It'll look like a parking space, but the intent is that it's a maneuverable.
Yeah, it could be striped and designated for backup and so forth. I think it should be done.
But the other option would be that, and again, this is for discussion, I don't know that our client has an issue on where, in other words, that could be the space and that could be not a space.
You can turn, you can turn around, you can do that.
Yeah.
Put them in the back that way, otherwise, it'd be back all the way out.
Yeah. We'll show it as a turn area, a turn area. I mean, I agree with you, ones against the building are less than ideal, but they are. But it's, they, we do have 37 feet to the backyard, so all the spaces are compliant. They have, they actually, they actually are deep if they're necessary, if they're necessary to be. So, when actual people are parked, I think they're going to have, I mean, they're going to have enough room to make, it's going to be easy for these two units that are supposed to spaces. No, not nearly as easy as being in a little parking lot. They'll be able to get in there now.
Can you give the reason, Chris?
Well, that, we can't require that, we don't know if, we have to assume that it can't, but they should try.
Stan, would you read the motion?
This would be a motion for site plan approval for D-variance relief. The D-variance relief is for one unit, it's based on density. The C-variance would be, as Roger's report indicates, the lot size, 88 square, 8,800 square feet is required, and the property is 7,561. Front setback building, 1675, required. 14 feet on the plan. Front setback porch, 12.43 required, 6.2 feet as designed. Side setback left, 10 feet required, 3 feet as proposed. Side setback right, 10 feet required, 7 feet as proposed. 8.2 feet to the side of the front decks. Front landscape, 35 percent required, 22.4 percent as proposed. That doesn't include the additional area underneath the porch, which would actually make it much greater, but it's not part of the ordinance. But it is positive, it's a positive proposal. And the last C-variance was the distance between principal buildings, 10 feet is required, 9.9 feet is proposed. So, that will be a motion affirmative for the site plan relief, the D-variance, as I stated, and the C-variances, as I stated. I didn't have any conditions...
The only conditions are the, any non-wavable city engineer conditions requiring eight sets of revised plans, plans, and revision to the site plan to show the K-turn, turnaround area at the location specified.
Okay, thank you. With those conditions.
Also, this, there'll be several members voting on this. The D-variance needs five positive votes, the C-variances need four positive votes And the site plan approval needs four?
Yes. Unless one of the board members has a problem, we'll do it as one motion. Anyone have any problems with that, that she would separate it at this point in time? No? Thank you.
Do I hear that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve their application.
With those conditions.
As mentioned, I have concerns about the parking. I think there's a potential here for conflict with the neighbor because these cars are going to back onto that property or drive across, it sure is guns. That notwithstanding, I think the overall improvement to the neighborhood as opposed to what's there now certainly justifies the variances, so I vote yes.
I think there's a lot of variances involved, but after explanation from Mr. Barnhart and seeing that the area the building is in, which is a large multifamily district, I think that it'll be a good improvement to the neighborhood, and I'm going to vote for it.
Barbara Hoover-Malkey?
I vote to approve both D. and C-variances to accommodate, I think we can accommodate the density because it's there now, and I certainly know that the property needs redevelopment, so I vote yes.
Mike Coste?
I also vote yes. I think it's a great improvement for the neighborhood. It's a middle of life, so we're down there, so I do vote yes.
Greg Palmsen?
I vote yes. The building does need to come down, it's there now, and eight bedrooms, coming down and eight bedrooms going back in is okay with me. I approve it.
Jay Carter?
I feel that it's a, I approve, and I feel that it's a definite improvement for the building that was there.
Rick Patterson?
I also approve for the same reasons.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, Senator, our first.
Next case is Atlantic City Electric Company, Wellington and Fredericksburg Avenue, Block 701, lots 20 in the S-60 district, to grant a site plan, D-variance and C-variance. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. The same three officials will be recusing themselves from this case.
Roger Rubin?
I do. The subject property is the Atlantic City Electric Company's electrical substation located in the woodsy wetlands area near the vendor boundary line on Fredericksburg Avenue, where it is a dirt road not generally available to view by the general public. The lot in question is 215 by 210, totally 45,100 square feet. This is an existing substation serving parts of Atlantic City, Vendor, Margate, and Longport, and it is composed of a gravel lot within a fenced area, a utility building, electrical processing equipment, and various ancillary structures. The applicant proposes an overhaul and expansion of the substation as set forth in the plan by PS and S engineers for the purpose of improving emergency reliability issues, which I take to mean we will hopefully have fewer and shorter power outages. This renovation will include removal from and additions to equipment of buildings, fence relocation, removal of temporary trailers, utility pole relocations, construction of several 50-foot height lightning masts, and creation of three off-site security gates across the dirt roads of Fredericksburg and Wellington Avenues. The plans per PS and S also show that for the most part, the site is surrounded by unbuildable wetlands. It is within a large area zoned by Margate under the 2004 master plan as open space and government, and future development will vary from nonexistent to minimal around this site. The actions required and comments are a D-use variance, as utility company property is not single-family, which is what S-60 permits, and as the applicant proposes to renovate and enlarge the non-conforming use, this is a use variance. Public utilities, electric, electric certainly no less than any others, are considered by law and courts to be inherently beneficial to society, and improving that service in an area which has suffered so badly in recent years is important. Site plan action is required. The site plan aspects are dealt with in a review letter from the city engineer made a part of this file and supplied to the applicant. The board should make those recommendations a condition of approval and authorize the city engineer to provide any waivers it sees fit, should the applicant request them. A C-variance for minimum roof pitch, 512 is required versus the proposed building expansion at 1/4 inch per foot, almost flat. Consider here the remote location not in public view, and the aesthetic considerations of the requirement disappear. of the requirement disappear. Note that the minimum distance between external walls or principal buildings, which was stated as a variance, the application is in fact not a variance because the ordinance intended this to refer to principal buildings on adjacent lots, and all of this development is on one lot. Fence height, 7 feet plus a foot of barbed wire is proposed versus 5 feet permitted. Security is vital, and 8 feet at this remote location could not create an aesthetic impact on anyone except wildlife and vandals. Height of structures, the 50-foot-high lighting masts exceed the height requirement for Margate's height zone A, which is 28 feet above flood elevation. Again, there is the remoteness and the inherently beneficial purpose, but also the masts are only 2 inches in diameter and could hardly be seen at all in the daylight, and certainly not at night. The question of lighting should be discussed. The applicant and their engineers and attorney should be complimented for an excellent, thorough, and understandable presentation of difficult technical material. You okay? You're on. The chairman had to.
I think the chairman had to.
Momentarily.
We can proceed without.
No problem. Thank you. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Enid Hyberg. I'm an attorney with Montgomery, McCracken, Walker &amp; Rhodes, and I'm representing the applicant, Atlantic City Electric Company, this evening. As Mr. Rubin has eloquently stated, we're here requesting a use variance for the expansion of the company's electrical substation, which is located at Fredericksburg and Wellington avenues, also known as Block 701, Lot 20, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use. We're also requesting height variances for the lightning masts, bulk variances, and preliminary and final site plan approval with waivers to allow the company to upgrade the substation with state-of-the-art equipment to improve the service and reliability to the, our customers in Margate and surrounding communities. I have three witnesses with me this evening. We can bring them forward and have them sworn at the same time?
Yeah, have them welcome.
Welcome at once. Thank you.
Yes. Rebecca, John, we're going to start with you. Come forward, please. What's your educational background?
I have a bachelor's of electrical engineering from University of Delaware.
And by whom are you employed?
Atlantic City Electric.
And what is your position with the company?
I'm an engineer too at the substation engineering department.
And would you explain to the board why we're coming before them requesting?
Basically, the equipment out at Marvin Substation now is 40 years or older, so it's been identified as a risk of reliability because the equipment's nearing the use, the end of.
What you can hold, I didn't hear.
Yeah, I can hold it, it's fine, don't worry. So our proposed project is essentially going to replace all that aging equipment with brand-new equipment.
And are there any other alternatives to identify why the company did it, be done in lieu of a brand-new substation?
The only alternative would be to build a brand-new substation, which, logistically speaking, isn't necessarily practical, plus it'd be more intrusive to your community, so that's really no alternative.
Could you explain to the board how these upgrades will intrude?
Yeah, so like I said before, the equipment's really old out there. It was installed in the 70s. Technology's come a long way since then, so all the new equipment is going to be a lot more, very reliable, and it's going to be controlled with microprocessor-based equipment, so it'll be outperforming pretty much everything that we're replacing, so.
Did this substation have anything to do with the blackouts we've had over the past couple of years? So would this help with any of that?
Yeah, yeah, there's, you know, like I said, the aging equipment is, it's starting to get towards the end of its useful life, so yeah, replacing that'll significantly diminish the outage in the area.
But John, just so the board understands, if there's an incident such as a fuel accident or another severe storm, that may not necessarily be that the upgrades would protect against such an outage.
Right. Factors outside of the control of the company is obviously, yeah, going to cause outages, but we'll obviously be here to promptly return service.
Is this an unmanned station?
Yes.
And how often is it visited by personnel?
Regularly, not very often at all for routine maintenance, emergency circumstances, but personnel's using that on site.
Is there sufficient parking, however, for those vehicles when they do come on site?
Yes.
And as far as the sound levels, could you explain to the board what the anticipated sound level will be after these upgrades?
Compared to the existing, we will be adding a new power transformer. This transformer is specified as a low-noise unit, and at the nearest residence, the sound level will be, sound level will be below the 50 dB level, and really, if you're standing next to a transformer, it sounds like a residential AC unit, so very low noise.
Will the company have any carbonated storage material?
No.
And let's discuss lighting. What type of lighting is proposed at the site?
The sub will have new, updated lighting, but really, the only cases where it'll be lit is when we have workers there at night, which is just emergency circumstances. So normally, the substation would be dark.
How about signs?
Post-warning signs on fences, gates, control buildings, just, you know, for public safety purposes.
And the lighting, will that lighting have any negative impact on any surroundings?
No, really, the surrounding of Marvin Substation is, you know, it's all vegetation, and it's really vicinity of the nearest residential residences, really. It's far enough away where it really wouldn't impact any of the local residences.
At present, there's seven of the fence, we've all got one foot of our block, correct?
Yeah.
And so the company proposes part of this plan to basically extend existing fence, and tie the fence in?
Yeah, yeah, we'll use the same fence. It's Atlantic City Electric standard. You know, number one is there to prevent theft and vandalism, but also it's for public safety, keeping everyone out of the yard away from power equipment.
I have no other questions. Just like I said. Thank you. Because you've been sworn, however, are you a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And have you, what is your educational background?
I have a bachelor in science and civil engineering from Rutgers University.
And?
Rutgers.
And have you testified before the Atlantic City Sports and State?
Yes, I have, several times.
If you would, would you walk the board through the site plan portion of this application?
Absolutely. The site is located along Wellington Avenue and Fredericksburg Avenue. It's located in an S-60 zone, single-family residence zone, which will be necessary to have a use variance, which my colleague will testify following the site plan testimony. This is the existing conditions plan. Basically, the substation is about approximately half an acre fenced, currently fenced with a chain-link fence and stoned area. There's an existing one-story building, equipment and foundations, all of which is proposed to be demolished except for a portion of the existing building, so the foundations will all be demolished, the existing fence and equipment will all be taken down, as well as some existing lighting. This is the site plan. The expansion is approximately 0.2 increase acres, so a total of 0.7 acres approximately. These, all these are foundations, and equipment will be on top of it. There's a new building, approximately double the size of the existing building that is proposed.
With regard to that building, could the new class be provided, site elevations?
Site elevations, yes. I do have them with me if the board wishes to take a look at them, and we also will submit them as part of our final plans to the engineer. This is the grading plan. Existing grades will be maintained. The finished floor elevation of the existing building is 11.46. The proposed building finished floor is 17.46, elevating it above flood. Because the proposed expansion is less than one acre of disturbance and no more increase impervious, no greater of 0.25 increase in impervious, no stormwater management is required per the state regulations. And this is the lighting plan. The only permanent light is the one located on the building. The rest of the lights would be temporary use during emergency situations. There's pole-mounted and foundation-mounted lights, which are, have a mounting height of 7 and 9 feet. And then we have a soil erosion plan meeting all of the standards for erosion requirements, and we'll be submitting the permit to Cape Atlantic Soil Conservation District. And the final plan is a detail of the chain-link fence with the barbed wire, a typical cross-section of the substation, as well as some swing gate details, which will be located along the existing roadways to prevent vehicle traffic from getting to the substation.
And with regard to those gates, I would just like to represent to the board that I have conversations with you, Mr. Lister, I've also had conversations with the city's official advocate. With regard to these, the installation of these gates in Fredericksburg and Wellington avenues, we will be preparing a license agreement which will be submitted to the city. We have also had similar conversations with the city of Vender, and they will be using the same forms agreement. They are, they are in agreement with the placement of these gates. It should also be noted that these gates will offer hidden access to any private property. There will be keys provided to emergency, police, and fire so that they can get access to the site. So all of those issues, I think, that were identified in your attorney's letter, we have addressed this evening. Any questions?
Any questions?
Paul, you've been sworn, but if you would, would you inform me as far as your appointment?
Sure. I'm employed by myself, working planning, I'm a soil proprietor. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I've been licensed since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, which I received in 1999. I currently represent five boards in towns such as this. I've testified throughout the state, actually in 19 of the 21 counties, including Atlantic County. I've never testified before this board before.
We would offer, Mr. Ricky, as our planning expert, and also, I'm just actually, this is our civil engineer.
Yeah, all your experts are accepted. Thank you.
Paul, if you would, would you go through the variances that were requested and just as you brought up, municipal laws?
Sure. Requesting several variances. We're requesting a D-2 variance to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. As mentioned, the site is located in your S-60, single-family residential district, which does not permit electric substations. We're also requesting a D-6 height variance to locate the mast associated with, lightning mast at a height of 50 feet where 28 feet is required. I note that Mr. Rubin mentioned that those masts are, while they are 50 feet in height, their diameter is only 2 inches in diameter. And I will discuss that in greater detail in a moment. And several bulk variances. First one is associated with minimum roof pitch, where 5 over 12 is required, where we're essentially asking for a flat roof, an existing condition, we're proposing to continue that condition, where 1/4 of an inch per foot is proposed. Also associated with fence height, 7 feet plus 1 foot of barbed wire is proposed, that again is the existing condition, but we're looking to extend that as part of the expansion of the facility where 5 feet is required. As needed, we're also requesting a variance for landscaping. 60% of the front yard may need to be landscaped in this regard. We're requesting that variance. Also, as needed, 35% of a residential lot shall be covered with landscaping. We're requesting that as needed. And also associated with the fence, the fence as proposed would be 3 feet from the front property line where 5 feet is required, so we're requesting that bulk variance as well. This board's heard a lot of testimony tonight. I know you're aware of the requirements for the variance applications. I'll try to be as short and brief as possible in that regard, but we're requesting a D-2 variance. We're required to provide what is known as the positive and the negative criteria. We've heard that this use is inherently beneficial use. For that reason, it's a use that automatically promotes the general welfare. So for that reason, we automatically meet the positive criteria. Also, because we're inherently beneficial use, we're not required to meet the Medici Enhanced Burden of Proof, essentially reconcile and admission of this use from the municipal master plan. New Jersey is a litigious state. There's a lot of case law regarding inherently beneficial uses, and that case law says that we should reply, rely on the SICA or the four-part balancing test in analyzing the negative criteria associated with the use variance application. It's a four-part test. It essentially says when the benefits of an application outweigh the detriments, that a board should vote in favor of an application. And the first part of that test is to identify the public interest at stake here. And we've heard from representatives tonight indicating that the reason that we really are here is to increase electric capacity to city residents and to increase reliability as well. It's my understanding that it has been a problem in the community for some time. The second part of the test asks us to identify the detriments associated with this application. And applications for electric substations are different than most applications that this board reviews, and the reason being is because the use is passive. We've heard testimony that there's going to be minimal traffic to the site, there's going to be no increase in noise, lighting is going to be for emergency purposes only. Realistically, the site is very well buffered and removed from the surrounding area. So the board fully understands the extent of the buffering. I did prepare a handout that seemed to have walked away.
Can we just walk this stage one? Say, say.
I'm assuming all the plans were part of the application.
All right. Bring out your hands here. The exhibit consists of three sheets. The first sheet is an aerial photograph, followed by two pages of pictures. To orient the board to the aerial photograph, north is facing straight up. The subject property's boundaries are approximately outlined in yellow, and they'll see a series of arrows. Those arrows are numbered 1 through 4. Those are shown in the orientation of the four pictures taken on page 2. Just a couple of quick facts, if I may. If you look in the center-left portion of the picture, you can see Margate Terrace. The municipal boundary line is running diagonally through the, essentially the upper-left to the lower-right portion of the site, along Fredericksburg Road, essentially to the right and to the north is Vender, and to the left and to the south and west. Is it too loud? Okay, I'm sorry. Is located within the city of Margate. It's quite clear from the aerial photograph, they say a picture's worth a thousand or a million words, that this site is very well buffered from surrounding land uses, particularly from residential land uses in the city. To give a quick, a few numbers, if you look to the lower-right portion where photograph number one is taken, the nearest residential property in this area to the site is approximately 480 feet away from the compound area. If we look at photograph number two, adjacent to Margate Terrace, the building associated with Margate Terrace is located approximately 470 feet away from this compound. And if we look to the west and to the south, adjacent to sites on North Clermont Avenue, now we're exceeding over 800 feet away from residential property. So we've already heard testimony, we see the site plans, that the area immediately surrounding the subject property is located within wetlands area, so the board can feel re... within wetlands areas, so the board can feel reassured that those wetlands are protected by NGDP requirements, and that buffer will remain intact in perpetuity. And I just identified some of the other land uses. We are in a bordering site here. I did identify in Venter. We have the Shalom House, religious use just to the north and west. There's a vacant golf complex in that area. It appears to be a golf complex and an elementary school. On page two, the photographs, as I mentioned, one through four correspond with the arrows on the aerial photograph. And the intent here is to show from the nearest residential properties what is essentially visible. And you can see through photographs one through four that... Photographs one through three, I should say, that the site is well buffered. Photograph number one, we're looking north and west along Fredericksburg Avenue. At this location, the site is... Would be undetectable as is and through the improvements. And photograph number two, looking generally in the southerly direction towards the site. Some of the top portions of... From the runway area, some of the top portions of the mass will be visible, but this is two feet in diameter. I want to also hope the board can recognize that there's currently twenty-eight utility poles on this site, ranging in height from thirty-eight to fifty-two feet. Those poles that exist create more of a visual impact in this area than the proposed two-inch diameter that's necessary for safety purposes associated with this facility. Also, while mostly in Venter, there are a number of other existing vertical elements that are visible from properties in this area in Margate, and they're really shown on essentially pictures five, six, and seven. We have an existing cell tower on North Fredericksburg Avenue. Photograph number six shows the existing water tank adjacent to the elementary school in Venter. And photograph number seven shows the multiple fall poles essentially with the vacant golf course. And finally, photograph number eight shows the buffer area adjacent to the Margate Terrace building, and it shows again how established that buffer area is again. So from a negative standpoint, the only potential negative impacts associated with this application are the visibility of this site. I think we've clearly shown that it's well removed from the surrounding area. Third part of the test asks us to... Can we mitigate any of these potentially nuggetive conditions? And at least from my perspective, it does not appear to be necessary as a result of the buffer. However, the applicant will clearly listen to the board if there are any conditions that you think are necessary in part of this application. And the fourth part of the test asks us to balance the benefits of this application, the public interest, the general welfare versus the detriments. And clearly, from a planning perspective, the benefits, the need to provide the additional capacity and reliability of electric service in this condition outweigh the detriments. We have a site that is particularly well-suited for this use. It's well removed from residential properties and will continue to remain so as part of this application. Regarding... We have some bulk variances as well. The positive criteria from the use variance pulls down through the polling case for those bulk variances. Again, I will focus on the negative aspects. Regarding the fence, again, we're looking to replicate an existing condition. The height is partially dictated here by the National Electric Safety Code, which requires that a minimum of a seven-foot fence is required. We're looking for a seven-foot fence plus one foot of barbed wire for extra safety. From a planning standpoint, that one-foot difference will be undetectable from surrounding properties. We think the added benefit of the safety outweighs the detriment. Regarding the height, when you seek a height variance, that the relationship for the special reason should relate to the actual purpose of the height ordinance. I did review your master plans from 2004 and 2006. It seems very clear that there's a strong intent in the community to regulate McMansions and other residential characteristics to retain a consistent height of residential properties throughout town, because this use is not anticipated in this district. Essentially, requirements are in your ordinance to allow for exceptions for public utilities. Commonplace in the world today is if you drive around town, I'm sure you see the water tanks that are well below the height requirements. That would not be your permitted use under your ordinance or anywhere in town. So there are needs for additional height for public utilities, and your ordinance essentially does not address those requirements. Again, I believe we've shown that although we are exceeding the height requirements, that would not result in a negative visual impact to the residential properties. It would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your ordinance, because it would not be changing the character of the residential neighborhoods as a result of it. And regarding the landscaping requirements, in this context, essentially for an electric substation, within the yard area, we cannot landscape by electric safety code, because that area needs to be gravel and grounded. Also, it does not make sense to plant in front... In the front yard landscaping as well, because landscaping results in the ponding of water, often after rainstorms. Water and electricity aren't a good mix. And also, for security purposes, the applicant wants to have a straight line of sight into their facility if any police come in, so that landscaping blocks the line of sight associated with that. And because we are well buffered on the perimeter of the track, landscaping from a planning standpoint does not seem to be needed in that regard as well. For the reasons that I mentioned, this application meets the burden of proof for use in bulk variances relief, and I hope the board feels the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Any other comments from the board? Would you like to read the motion?
Thank you for the presentation. It was well done. The first issue is for site plan approval. So it would be a motion affirmative for site plan approval. There's also a request for a D-use variance. You heard some testimony about the... Because it's enlarging a non-conforming use, it needs this type of variance. I obviously agree. I also agree that it's an inherently beneficial use, and therefore, once the board finds that and finds that the negative criteria don't outweigh that, which is very difficult, it would need to... My recommendation is to approve that. There's also C-variances for roof pitch. Five-twelve is required. One-quarter is proposed. Fence height, seven feet plus barbed wire is proposed when five feet is permitted. And the height of structure is a C-variance. I'm assuming because it's an accessory use to the substation, it's a C-variance. So that would be a variance of twenty-eight feet above flood elevation. So that would be the motion at this point in time. Oh, I'm sorry. The condition is there's a license agreement that has to be approved by myself and the city solicitor for the passage of the city.
Why would that be this board's condition? Those are off the site. The three gates are totally off the site, so that's...
Because we want to have something that allows us to have something on the record that there would be a use of it for emergency vehicles.
We also want a condition about satisfying any outstanding conditions of the city engineer.
I also think the conditions are agreed to.
Are you a motion? Mike makes a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Mark.
Considering the essential use of this facility and its location near the dark side of the room, I vote to approve the site plan and all the requested variance variances.
Mike Richmond.
I think anything that's going to help out with the power outages we've had in the past is an improvement, so I'm going to vote yes.
Barbara Chupavalti.
I vote yes as well. It benefits public welfare.
Mike Chris Charlie.
With the rest of the board members, I'd vote yes.
Frank Palisino.
Oh, yes.
Dave Carter.
Yes.
Richard Patterson.
Due to the overwhelming public need and benefit, I'd vote yes.
Alexis Namburn.
Is there any other business?
Yes.
I'd like to congratulate the new board members on a job well done. Are you a motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor? opposed, meeting adjourned.
Works for me.